I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic where it stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everybody for coming tonight. We have no visitors wishing to speak. We do have some written communication. We do have a letter here from the Amherst Nursery School regarding our UPK program about tuition increases, that they are going to mount a letter-writing campaign to New York State requesting an increase in funding. There is a letter here from Mr. Brad Bardot, who's one of our retirees, saying he would like to thank us and the district for his years of service. He couldn't be here tonight. And also would like to express his appreciation and gratitude to Dr. Carousel and Dr. Lane. In addition, we have a letter from the Amherst IDA regarding a pilot agreement that they're doing. Do we have any reports in any special committees?
It was shared by Mr. Bellisle, and this committee consists of members of the community, members of the police force, BOCs, administrators, teachers, and PTA members. And basically what we did was look at the people who know intimately the details of our emergency plans. They review them and kind of share ideas so that over the summer they can tweak their plans so that all the building plans are more aligned, so they can share best practices and things that they have discovered were beneficial buildings. So the next meeting will be in October, and we'll see what happens over the summer.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Well, thank you. First item on the superintendent's report is, in keeping with a tradition we started last year, is a formal recognition of our retirees as they start the next chapter in their lives and unfortunately, in many cases, leave behind very big shoes to fill for us here at the school district. This year, we have several retirees, and I'm pleased that some of them are able to join us tonight for this formal recognition. So we'll start with the youngest grades at Windermere first. And Mrs. Flanagan, if you could please say a few words about the retirees from Windermere.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to honor and celebrate Michelle Buck. Michelle has been teaching for 24 years at Windermere, from kindergarten to third grade and to fourth grade. And it gives me great pleasure to say that we must recognize and appreciate all of the skills and the knowledge that Michelle has given to our faculty, our building, and most importantly, to the students. And to really thank her for her efforts and her work. Michelle teaches her students with such a passion, with each lesson that I would stop in and observe. She's incredible to watch and to see the look on the students' faces, their joy. And she just truly has so much fun with the kids. Your students will never forget you, Michelle, and your dedication to them. Like the times you would show up at their sporting events after hours, the time you would hug them in the hall when they were having a bad day, or the time you would host your annual summer bounce house party. You go above and beyond for the kids, and they will never forget the care and concern you've given them. Your teachings will forever be treasured, Michelle, but your contribution in our lives and the lives of so many kids can never be measured. And Amherst Central Schools and Windermere will miss you incredibly. Congratulations on your retirement.
Congratulations to you. Thank you very much.
Mr. Greisman, join us up front, please, for our middle school honorees.
We'll start with Janet. I have the privilege of saying a few words on Janet Bataglia's behalf this evening. Mrs. Bataglia came to the Amherst Central School District in 1990 when she was hired as a physical education teacher at Amherst Middle School. Fortunately for anyone who has ever been affiliated in any way with AMS since then, she never left. Other than teaching some gifted and talented classes in '03-'04, Janet has been a major factor in the consistent, strong, and healthy heartbeat of the physical education program for 27 years. We are very fortunate that she wound up here. However, because ACSD is not where she began teaching, she spent time teaching in Florida, Pittsburgh, at a St. Francis School, I think locally, at Lewiston Porter as a teaching assistant, and at Niagara University as a graduate assistant. I believe all told, I heard the other night, that Janet has been teaching for 37 years. That deserves a round of applause. In addition to teaching, Janet has also made quite a name for herself as a coach. She has coached soccer, basketball, volleyball, softball, track, and most notably, I believe, lacrosse. When you mention Janet's name, people know of her prowess as a lacrosse coach. She's won numerous championships and received many teaching and coaching honors in that regard. It is also important to note that Janet's relationship with Amherst Central School District went beyond it being the school district she worked for. In 1998, she and her husband Pete bought a home in the district. Fittingly, its backyard ends where some of the high school athletic fields end. Janet and Pete sent three children through our schools, and I believe that that personal family decision speaks volumes about her investment in and care for the entire Amherst Central School District community. Beyond Mrs. Bataglia's time spent in the classroom, beyond the success as a coach, and beyond the fact that she willingly became a district resident and parent, it is important to note things about Janet herself. She is a wonderful teacher, colleague, and person who has kept the best interest of children in mind as she walked along her very, very impressive career. She speaks and acts with a combination of head, heart, and calm that make her a joy to be around. When I watch her teach, watch her interact with college colleagues, or speak with her myself, I'm always left with a feeling that everything is going to be okay. So, as I contemplate how our school moves forward without a person like Mrs. Bataglia next year, I will channel that thought for sure. Janet, congratulations. Thank you for everything you've done for AMS. Enjoy retirement. And if you don't move south by November, please come back and sub. Please help me recognize Janet for her decorated Okay. It is not here to be here this evening to help celebrate Nathan Philip Frey's career at Amherst Central School District, which was spent entirely with the students of Amherst Middle School. Before coming to us in 1992, I should note that Mr. Philip Frey began his teaching career in 1985 in special education in the central New York area. From there, he held a long-term substitute position at St. Mary's School for the Deaf. After that, the prelude to his career with Amherst took shape in 1989. At that point, he accepted a position teaching in a self-contained BOCs classroom for the deaf and hearing impaired. I mention the prelude or foreshadowing because at that time, BOCs was renting a classroom in Amherst Middle School. And then in 1992, he gets a full-time position with us in Amherst Middle School, teaching seventh grade, I believe. Correct? In 1996, he switches to teaching in the sixth grade, where he has remained ever since. So, if my math is correct, Mr. Philip Frey has spent 32 years in the classroom, with the last 25 years spent serving the families and students of Amherst Central School District. Correct? There is no question that the families and children of Amherst benefited immeasurably by having Mr. Philip Frey so meaningfully connected with Amherst Middle School. His enthusiasm for teaching, life, and helping children is boundless. His understanding of great instruction is expert. His willingness to help mentor colleagues is well-documented, and his interest in getting involved beyond the four walls of his classroom are exemplary. In his time with us, Mr. Philip Frey has coached boys volleyball, girls softball, girls field hockey. He's served as a class advisor and student council advisor many times over. He's advised our service club. He's served as the AEA's retirement representative. He was one of the Amherst Middle School's first cohort of mentor teachers. Without a doubt, Mr. Philip Frey has made a difference, and through the years, people and organizations have noticed. He was AMS Educator of the Year, New York State Special Education Teacher of the Year at one point, and New York State Lottery Educator of the Week. However, I can't be sure if that honor is related to his work in the classroom or time spent in the casino. Either way, it's a pretty good award. There is no question that AMS will have a void in it with the retirement of Nathan Philip Frey. He is a great teacher, and more importantly, a great person. I wish you the best, fine sir. Enjoy your retirement and enjoy Florida. You've earned it. Would you please help me recognize Nathan Philip?
Mr. Pigeon, please join us up here to honor our high school retiree.
I think you've had most of our kids.
Thank you, everyone. It is certainly my pleasure to introduce and congratulate Mr. Robert LaFo. We call him Bob. Bob has been with the district since 1984, the year I graduated from high school. And he was recently recognized as a teacher of the month a few months back. So I thought I'd start my presentation by stealing a few lines that the students have said about Bob. They described him as being uniquely engaging in his teaching style. And as a U.S. History and AP Economics teacher, he has managed to turn subjects that many see as boring and pointless into interesting and fun topics. He never allows students to misunderstand class concepts and is always willing to work with them after school. I was not surprised when those words were shared about Bob. He has dedicated his career to the highest order of critical thinking in his students, and has always challenged his students to think critically and read between the lines. I've often visited his classroom where engaging dialogue was going on, and Mr. LaFo would always strive to probe and debate students' thinking and nudge them to make the connections to the current historical themes, as well as any current events that were going on currently in our society. I've seen a quote in the past that says that "The main job of a history teacher is to argue alternative viewpoints to your students and give them the perspectives so they can see those perspectives that other people have." And they're keenly aware of those perspectives and other people's points of view. So if that's the job of a social studies teacher, Bob has done his job, and he's done his job very well for many years, 35 years in our district. Mr. LaFo has also been an outstanding coach for the Boys and Girls Track Program. He's not one to accept a lot of praise, and Mr. LaFo has always motivated his athletes to perform at their highest potential. With his help training, he's yielded many state qualifiers and sent many students to our state championships over the years. And my understanding is Bob will be continuing his role helping our track program in the future. So we're eager that he'll stay connected and stay connected to Tiger Nation. On a personal note, I've always been impressed with Bob. I've used his alternative perspective posturing to really run different matters by him, and I can always rely on Bob for a fresh tidbit of perspective that I had not considered in the past. In addition, I've noticed that Bob is most likely had the best attendance of any teacher I've ever seen. Rarely missed any days of school. And that's even more impressive because if anybody knows Bob, he lives in the deep, deep South towns. So we know that Bob really loves history, but I'm not sure he believes in the science of the Buffalo Lake effect. Because whenever there was heavy snow, one of the first things I would think of is Bob LaFo. And there I would pull in the parking lot, and there was Bob's truck, probably at 7:00 a.m. And he lives way down south. So he was always eager to be in class and encourage his students and really be a beacon for them. So congratulations to Bob on a great career, and we look forward to your service to our kids in the future.
This lesson we talked about, we were supposed to say I was an astronaut. I am keeping that fresh dog.
We have two board members that will be participating in their last board meeting tonight. And former board president and longtime board member, Mr. David Stocking, will join me to help recognize our board members that will be stepping down after tonight. So come on up, please, Mr. Stocking. Didn't think you'd be back in this group for another meeting, did you? Tonight is my privilege to recognize two dedicated individuals for their untiring commitment to public education. While serving on the school board, Dr. Lane and Dr. Carousel faced many complex and demanding challenges. Through it all, they were unwavering in their goal of helping our students achieve in school and, more importantly, in life. Former board member Leslie Kramer said, "Dr. Carousel's tenure on the board came with a strong commitment to making our schools the best they can be. She served the district and community with unwavering conviction, wisdom, and love for the schools and the children. It was a pleasure to serve on the board with her. I wish her luck in all her future endeavors." It's also important to remember the personal sacrifices school board members make. They volunteer many hours to help lead our district. They are constantly involved in professional development to keep abreast of the latest trends in educational leadership, are deeply involved in community activities, and spend many hours at extracurricular events. Again, Leslie Kramer offered the following remarks. "It was a pleasure to serve on the board with Dr. Lane. Her depth of knowledge of institutional education informed her impact on the board and was a huge asset to all of us. Her friendly demeanor helped me in my adjustment as a new board member. I also wish her luck in all her future endeavors." Former board president and longtime board member, Mr. Stocking, has joined us tonight to share a few words about his former colleagues.
American history is pointless, is that what I'm saying? Good evening, everyone. It is good to be back here. I love the new kind of curtains. No more being exposed.
We all kick our shoes off now.
Yeah, don't get too comfortable. Unless I pull you to sleep. So during my board tenure, I was certainly privileged to work with a variety of board members, each bringing unique experiences and skill sets to the board table. The diversity of backgrounds was truly amazing. I think we had accountants, bankers, business leaders, nonprofit organization leaders, small business owners, PTA officers, journalists, I'll put a plug for engineers, and more. Amherst is truly fortunate to consistently have boards of education comprised of such talented people. And tonight, we're saying goodbye to two people that brought, I think, an even higher level of knowledge and experience to the board than most members. Dr. Lane, with a PhD in education, always offered tremendous insight into education topics that was extremely informative to myself and, I believe, most board members. As dean of the School of Education at Medei College, she has been at the forefront of the latest ideas and trends in education. This has been unique for the board to have such a wonderful window into new education topics. When Dr. Lane joined the board nine years ago, she was able to make an immediate impact, as she didn't have to acquire the normal learning curve to understand the lingo of education. And every field has its unique acronyms and expressions, but I was certainly amazed by all the lingo of the educational world. And so, most members feel like they're drinking from the fire hose when they join. For Dr. Lane, that was really no problem. She didn't miss a beat when she started. Dr. Carousel, a researcher with a PhD in social psychology, also brought excellent knowledge and talent to the board, especially related to human behavior. And let me say this, serving on the board of education with six other people, each with quite different backgrounds and interests, is an excellent experiment in human behavior. My guess is Dr. Carousel could write another thesis on dynamics of school boards. Maybe that's your next step. No, maybe not. Okay. Probably as a result of her background, Dr. Carousel was always a student of board process and board topics. She totally immersed herself in each item that we were planning to discuss at the board table, and she came to the board meeting having fully researched the material and ready for an insightful discussion. Probably one of her greatest frustrations, as she periodically commented, was the amount of time we were forced to spend on financial matters as opposed to the more interesting educational topics. And we spent way too much time on that, but it's a necessary evil. I think typically, when individuals decide to pursue a seat on the board of education, it's because they are actively involved in their children's education and the success of that, and they naturally want to have a greater impact in shaping that education. Once elected, however, they must make a significant transition from focusing upon the education of just their children to that of the district's approximately 3,000 students. Quite frankly, some board members are more successful at this than others. But in the case of both Dr. Lane and Dr. Carousel, I think they set the standard for caring about all students. I really want to repeat that. They truly set the standard for caring for all students. In my 18 years on the board, I never experienced any other board members that came close to the level of caring that these two exhibited towards all students. It's truly commendable. As they leave the board, I can only hope that each of you remaining on the board, when deciding upon students in the future, will maybe take a moment to ask yourself, "How would Dr. Lane and Dr. Carousel have approached this?" I think it would serve you well. Now, I would be remiss if I didn't point out some of the challenges we had. There were numerous late evenings, I recall, when we were all exhausted and ready to head home, and we were locked in a lengthy, sometimes circuitous conversation. And Dr. Lane would begin sharing her thoughts on a particular discussion topic, and she would talk, and talk, and talk. She had such passion and knowledge regarding educational topics that she just wanted to share with all of us. We often hoped she'd find the Reader's Digest version, which we would have all been happy with. As board president, I would sometimes be trying to guide a delicate topic through the discussion process, hoping to reach consensus in a board decision that all members could live with. Entering the discussion, I usually had a reasonably good idea of, you know, how everybody was feeling about it and where they were aligned on the topic. And many times, I thought I knew where Dr. Carousel was coming from and what her viewpoint was. And then all of a sudden, she would challenge my thinking and raise a completely different perspective. The board would then, of course, have a spirited and thought-provoking discussion that usually forced everyone to expand their thinking on the topic. Did it drive you crazy? You better did. But in reality, really, in all seriousness, she forced myself and others to thoroughly examine important topics from all perspectives. And it was really, really valuable. Both Dr. Carousel and Dr. Lane have been extremely active board members, taking on numerous committee roles through the years, including serving as delegates to the Erie County Association of School Boards and the New York State School Boards Association. Usually, the board asks for a volunteer to serve as these delegates, and when no one volunteers, Dr. Carousel and Dr. Lane usually step forward. And I can tell you that serving as a board officer requires a surprising amount of additional work. Two years ago, Dr. Carousel guided the Board of Education through one of the most important and difficult responsibilities a board faces, and that's selecting a superintendent. It is a ton of work and an extremely important process, which I think was conducted with the utmost professionalism through the leadership. I'd like to extend my sincere appreciation to both Dr. Carousel and Dr. Lane for the leadership and contributions you made to the district during the past nine years. I'd also like to thank you for all that you taught me during my years on the board and the great experience we had working together. And speaking from experience, you're really going to enjoy Tuesday evenings. Thanks again, and best wishes.
So, on behalf of the Amherst Central School District, I'd like to thank both of you for your service to our school community, and close with a comment from former board member Jennifer Bales. Jennifer said, "Over the period I served with them on the board, I was impressed by their shared commitment to assuring excellence and fairness in the district, and this commitment has been unwavering throughout their tenure. These two women have consistently been voices of reason on the board, raising issues related to ethical decision-making, maintaining curricular standards, and sustaining an environment where all students can succeed." All caps, all. "They have been strong, smart voices, supporting students, faculty, parents, and administrators in both good times and bad. The Amherst Central School District is a better place for having these two extraordinary women give selflessly of their time and expertise for almost a decade. We all owe them a debt of gratitude." Thank you. Dr. Lane, come on up. And Dr. Carousel. Thank you, Mr. Stocking.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So moving on.
Came in right behind Dr. Carousel and Dr. Lane and can reiterate everything everyone has said about them. It has been a pleasure serving my eight years on the board with them, and everything Mr. Stocking has said is completely true that has happened in the boardroom. So I can say thank you, congratulations, and please come back.
So thank you to our
Just take a walk down the sidewalk here and yell up.
Thank you to our retirees that were able to attend tonight. You certainly deserve the accolades you're receiving, and you've earned the emotions you'll be feeling over the last few days of school. I know it can't be hard to step away from something that you've poured your entire career into. And as a former teacher in the district, many of you who we're honoring tonight have left an impression on me as to what the Amherst way is. You know, how do you conduct yourselves? How do we approach instruction? And most importantly, putting the best interest of kids first and foremost. So thank you for what you've offered me, and that's a torch I'll continue to carry here in the district as the superintendent. I know you're all respectful people, and you would stay if you felt like, you know, there were more entertaining things for the meeting, but you do understand if you want to enjoy the rest of your evening and go, but you're certainly welcome to stay. The next piece of the superintendent's report, I'm excited to welcome Dr. Schaumfeld, Dr. Weber, high school science teacher, and several of our students. Recently and throughout the year, they participated in some very exciting research through University of Buffalo that's often called the Genome Project. So most recently, there was a celebration of their research at UB that I was able to attend. So I asked them if they could come and share with us tonight some of their findings and research. Dr. Weber.
Well, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen in the gallery and the Board of Education.
Hold on one second. Yeah, yes, please.
Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you very much for having us. I've been in the district for many years, and I count my blessings every year. It's truly a pleasure and an honor to work with, as in our biology classroom, we say, all of your genetic offspring. They're great kids and a lot of fun to have fun with. So for the last couple of years, we've been associated with the University of Buffalo doing what is really what we in the science field call primary research. Now, for those of the people in the room that may not be as intimately familiar with scientific research as these wonderful people are standing in front of you, primary means they're really at the cutting edge of doing some science research. The experiments that they were doing were not cookbook. We didn't purchase it from some textbook company or anything like that. This is real This is real research that they're doing spearheaded by a group of professors, but one of which is Dr. Stephen Corey, whose children went through this district and who lives in this district, and maybe some of your neighbors or one of your neighbors. So, he's really been a pleasure and an honor to work with. I'll briefly, in about forty-five more seconds, give you an idea of what's going on. Then, we're going to turn the floor over to Ms. Matty, and she's going to present a couple of interesting things about some of the research that they did. After that, I'll ask some of the students to mention a couple of things about what they liked about the experience, how it enhanced their education, and then we'll take questions from the board in or from the floor. So, as I've said before, we've worked for the last couple of years. Mr. Bauer and I, Mr. Bauer couldn't be here tonight, but he's another high school chemistry teacher. He and I went for some training run by Dr. Corey and a few other professors at the University of Buffalo a couple of years ago over the summer, trained us in what to do with the students. In a nutshell, what these students are doing is what we refer to as bioinformatics genetics research. So, we're studying the DNA inside of a bacteria, a model organism that was selected because it has some interesting genetic engineering components to it. The genes that each of these young people were allowed to study, no physical human being has ever looked at on the face of the planet ever before. Computers have looked at them, but no physical person has looked at them. So, the groundbreaking research that they participated in really has the potential to get into some research labs and have people do some what we call wet bench work with it. So, at this point, I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Matty. She's going to share a little bit about their poster. There are three other posters in the hallway. It wasn't just this one. It's just the physics of getting in here was a little tight. So, Matty, the floor is yours.
Okay, so with this genome project, we studied the bacteria Kaido Pyroxylinarius, which is a flesh-eating bacteria. It causes a disease called pitted foot, which is mostly in third world countries, like countries in Asia and Africa. So, we were looking for the gene, the gene protein sequence that actually takes part in the flesh-eating because it's very helpful for like skin cancer, and you can imagine a lot of other things. So, basically, we took the genes that we got, which are actually shown in these like little arrow sections right there. We took them and put them through like a bunch of blast sequences, which is basically putting the genes that were in our gene sequences through like genes that are known and like proteins that are known to see if there were any like correlation stuff. So, these graphs came out of most of like the blast sequences, and these three show that it's transmembrane, which basically means that it goes through membranes, like the nucleus or the cell membrane. And through these, we can see that it went through six times. And with these posters, we actually took a day off of school, and we went to UB. And there are a bunch of other posters kind of like this. Like, we did the Kaido Pyroxylinarius, but other people had like studying like the Bigfoot genome and other stuff like that. And we got somewhat conclusive results, but we had to get through nine modules with just going in like in the morning from school and stuff. So, most of us didn't make it all the way, but we still got some pretty cool results.
One thing that I may have failed to mention is each student received their own individual gene. So, on this particular poster, there's three genes listed, but each student researched their own gene independently. And as Matty said, all of this was done voluntarily from the students before school. We usually met at about 7:30 a.m. and worked for about forty-five minutes. Many of them were in there five days a week for upwards of an hour over the course of a few months preparing for their presentation. So, can a couple of other volunteers maybe share how participating in the research project was exciting, or how they think it might help their future education? Four of the wonderful young ladies here are in ninth grade, and one is a senior member, literally a senior that's graduating in just a few days. Sophie, we'll start at the end. Come down.
I think this project is interesting and exciting because just the coming together at UB and just seeing all the different bacterias that other people did and the work they put into it. So, you compare all the different results at like one's work, and I think it's just interesting that no one's studied this bacteria before, and you're the first to see it.
I thought it was cool at UB. Like, there were a lot of groups and a lot of posters, which I kind of wasn't expecting. I was kind of expecting like two schools and then us being one of them. But no, it was like a lot of people, and they all had like way more interesting posters than us.
I'm not sure that's true, but maybe Phil or I stuck it. Sure.
Talking about future, I mean, I'm not sure what I'm going to do, but this definitely helps get into colleges.
It also helps having like research experience that we wouldn't normally have in a classroom in case someone decides to be able to have some time to do that.
It was really cool to see, like, we all did our work individually, like for each gene. But at the end, like when we did the conclusion part, we saw that like the different genes work together to make the whole organism function.
Does anyone have any questions for the students or myself?
Are any of you going into research, do you think? Or is this just a piece of your overall puzzle?
I have a related question, which may be more easy to answer. How is this going to change what you do in high school? Do you see any, anything that's going to change in the high school and for us to college?
I mean, it kind of helps with the study of biology. I mean, us four freshmen took biology this year, but it definitely helped like knowing about genes and all like the gene sequences and stuff.
Anyone else have any questions for the students?
Will this continue again next year?
That's a great question. We're hoping so, yes. So, Mr. Bauer and I are on board. We're currently working with the University of Buffalo and Dr. Corey and his colleagues. So, we're hoping that it will continue. I'm in. I know the students are in, and we're looking to always recruit additional students. So, we had twelve students this year who are different than the students that we had last year. The interesting thing, the first year, it was research within research. So, from Dr. Corey's perspective, he is funded by an NSF grant where they're looking at promoting education within secondary schools. For us, we're in it just for the fun. So, we had to play a little bit of a research game where we had experimental students and control students last year. This year, because we're sort of, for lack of a better word, off the grid in terms of the grant major objective, we were able to bring in some additional students to do some work, and everybody could participate in the experiment.
How were the students selected, or is it a volunteer?
Last year was a little different than this year. Let me just address this year and going forward because I foresee that it'll be similar in future as it was this year. So, Mr. Bauer and I just publicized it to all of the students in the Science Department in general, nine through twelve. The remaining four are students in my own classroom. Alyssa is in my homeroom, so they decided to stick with me, which was nice. There are some students that aren't here that were in other classes, but it was just word of mouth. We put some announcements together. We had some publicity from last year's students. But it wasn't a selective process. Anyone who wishes to participate can. Last year was a little different because we were under some strict guidelines for research purposes. I don't know. I hope that I've answered your question.
No, thank you.
Sure.
Based on this representation, I would say that the STEM fields are not as likely to be as male-dominated in the future.
I would tend to agree, ladies. How many is... We had two males? No, three, three males. Three males. Four males. Four males. Do I have five? So, this year, we had twelve students. So, four of them were males, and the other eight were females. And it was a neat mix. Eight, no, six, six freshmen and the other upper-class people?
Eight freshmen.
Eight freshmen, eight freshmen and four upper-class people. So, it was a nice mix. Any other questions for the students? I personally like to thank all of these kids. They worked very hard on their project. They did a fantastic job at UB. To give you an idea of who they were up against, they were probably pretty close to, at the University of Buffalo, thirty different schools represented and probably around three hundred students that they were milling around with, sharing research. So, it was a fantastic day. Rochester-based schools also had their own presentations, so this same project is associated in the Rochester area as well. So, we hope to continue. I'm sure that we will, and we're very excited. Although they may not look like they're excited right now, they definitely are. It takes a lot to get kids in voluntarily at 7:30 in the morning when they don't have to be there. And special thanks to the parents that are in the gallery for transporting them and allowing them to participate. So, thank you very much.
Exciting initiative with us and you have some of your findings. If you don't mind leaving the posters in the hallway.
Not at all.
Some folks would be happy to take a look at them after the meeting, and we'll make sure they get back to you in the next couple of days.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Schoenfeld. I appreciate it. All right, great. You want this out in the hallway right now, please? Okay, very good. All right. Out this way, guys and ladies. Thank you again, everybody.
So, continuing along in superintendent's report, we have a final presentation from interim business official, Mr. Wile. As promised back during budget development, we promised to come back today and review our fund balance projections. So, as you see, there are a couple resolutions under new business for you to accept potential transfers up to a certain amount to our reserve funds. You'll see that Mr. Wile's projections from April and March are starting to come to fruition. So, I'm excited that we have this opportunity to review this heading into the summer months, and then we'll see again in October at the first meeting where the final numbers landed at year-end through our audit presentation.
Thank you. Would a board meeting be without a discussion on finances? Here we are. This is the final financial board report of the year. And as Mr. Pennella mentioned, this is a culmination of a number of things. There's a convergence here of our budget development and also the long-range fund balance plan that Mrs. Conley shared with you in the fall. And we'll see how those two pieces come together. Today, what we're going to do, and one bullet point that I did think about as we were sitting here, this continues to be a work in progress. Even though we are in the middle of June, it is a work in progress, and we've got a range of numbers that we are homing in on. We're going to review the fund balance projections as they sit today. We're going to determine a dollar range for distribution to the reserve, which is something that you'll see on the agenda. That is what will happen every year from this point on, is you'll approve a range of dollars to go into the reserves. And we will also talk about the creation of a debt service fund using some monies from our capital fund and the most recent borrowers. This is a slide that duplicates what we talked about a few months ago. The reserves are in the categories discussed here. That's no different from what we talked about. And we'll choose a couple of them to move any excess funds from the fund balance, the ones that make most sense. These are the fund balance categories. You have an appropriated fund balance, and you have an unappropriated fund balance. Once again, similar to what was discussed in the fall and in the spring. The activity 2015 through 2017, this is once again a duplication of the slide that was shared with you in March. As you can see, when we started off in 2015 year, we had a fund balance total, including reserves, of more than $8 million. As of June 30th last year, we were down to $6.4 million. And one of the items on the current budget development plan was to take $1.3 million from the capital projects and the repairs reserve to begin the funding of our new capital project. So, with no other activity, what we would have seen is a total fund balance with reserves at around $5.1 million. We subtracted the $1.3 million, as was mentioned earlier. And at the bottom of the page, we updated from March the amount of money that we believe that we will be able to add back in to that $5.1 million. If you recall, in March, we were talking about asking about $1.6 million. And we said, "That's a little conservative." We wanted to make sure that it was a decent cushion for health insurance over four months. We felt it was going to grow a little bit, and it does appear so well. The combined total of excess revenues and unencumbered balances means that we'll be able to add somewhere between $1.8 and $2 million to that fund balance. So, if we go back, $5.1 million should be closer to $7, $7.1 million when all is said and done. The revenue total was $1.4 million in excess, and we're looking right now at around $400,000 to $600,000 of the current budget being unencumbered and available to flow into the balances. As you recall, in the fall, we did cut off purchase orders. We made sure that there was a plan to build that. And it looks as though that through the fall, and as we speak right now, that's been a very successful plan. How are we going to distribute the $1.8 to $2 million? The first two bullet points are already given. We have already distributed $929,881 as an appropriation from the fund balance to support next year's budget. And as you recall, the two items of that $929 were a $500,000 item, which supports a contingency component on the expenditure side. So, the plan, the idea is that maybe we would not need that. And also, if you recall, the BOSI's aid component of state aid when the budget was, the state budget was approved, appeared to be lower than our estimates. So, we were confident that the number that we put in on the state aid would be a significant amount higher. And so, those two totals, $929, are not necessarily planned to be used, but we will distribute them to the fund balance just in case. But we're quite confident that when we end up this time next year, that unless something untoward happens, there's an emergency, we should see the majority of that retained within the fund balance to discuss on how to work with it next year. The other thing, the second bullet, we are allowed to maintain up to 4% of our budget in an unappropriated fund balance component. That's the most liquid and fluid and flexible component. And at this point, $2,292,000 is that 4% limit. So, it's always prudent to see if you can get as close to that limit as you can. And with the current balance, it allows us to distribute $175,000 into that unappropriated fund balance component. So, if you take a look at those two, now we're running close to $1.1 million already identified to be distributed. So, within a $1.8 to $2 million distribution in total, we're looking for $700,000 to $900,000 to be put into a reserve. So, in looking at the reserves that we had, we have selected a couple that are on the agenda for this evening. The capital reserve, which was approved by the voters to be funded up to $500,000, is one area that we'd like to see if we can have that approval so that we could, at the end of the year, put up to $500,000 into that category. That capital reserve will be there to fund future capital projects, and it is a good way to set the scene for next capital project, and particularly if those items grow. There are some capital projects that you could then fund out of the reserve, and then with the state aid, it would have minimal to no impact on the taxpayers. The other component is the retirement contribution reserve, and that refers specifically to the New York State Employees Retirement Reserve. And in the fall, Mrs. Conley gave you a series of projections and targets. This particular reserve that currently has a $400,000 balance had a target of $1.6 million. So, what we're going to do here is recommend that up to $1.2 million be distributed into this particular reserve. So, if you combine the two bottom bullet points, you've got $1.7 million in terms of accommodating the additional money. We're not going to have that amount. We want to make sure that that bucket is deep enough to take the additional amount. It's more likely going to be $700,000 to $900,000. But in identifying those two reserves, they seem to be the most practical ones to put the additional monies into, and particularly the retirement. And, uh, particularly the retirement contribution reserve, um, at a, uh, a budget of more than $700,000 a year is, is an easier one to retrieve, um, if we need to, uh, work on balancing our budget in the future.
Yeah, and again, Mark, just to, to illustrate the point that I think you mentioned and made and it's up on the screen. This certainly is a range, you know, at year end, there's a lot of accounting that occurs. You know, we're, there are some unknowns that remain even as we sit here. Um, as you know, we're self insured for our health insurance, so we don't know what claims will be for this month. Uh, we also don't know what our substitute costs, any, any view will be for this month. Uh, but we've done some projections and we've been very conservative with our estimates. So we feel confident we'll land within that range. Um, and again, the, the selection of the reserves was done very, um, intentionally and in line with the long range reserve plan that you all contributed to and has been presented here annually for the last several years. So we do believe, again, that ERS reserve is, um, a target of 1.6 million, although it sounds like a, a large amount, only represents two years' worth of our ERS contribution requirement. So, at this point, when we have the final numbers with the resolutions that are on the agenda, we'll have the flexibility to distribute the funds in those two reserves. And then we'll come back in the fall through the audit report and the long, update of the long range reserve plan and see where the final numbers landed. And of course, we can provide that information to the board ahead of time as well in writing.
Okay, now before I go to the last slide, I, I do wanna mention that, uh, we talked about this before. With the, the idea of having around 5.1 million dollars, uh, we, we had already planned to, uh, have, uh, the, the end of this year hit close to 7 million and then look at, uh, running towards eight if we possibly could in the future. And, uh, most recently with our, our new, uh, bond issue and, and our debt service, that particular conversation with Moody's, I think, went very, very well. And, uh, they, they did like the idea of, of establishing a reserve at around 15% of your budget, which is at or about 8 million dollars. And, uh, there was a little concern, uh, if, if we were running in that 5 million and consistent in going down. Uh, but we were able to convince them very well that we were, uh, we were moving up and showed them the numbers that, uh, uh, ended up with a very, very positive bond rating and, and a great rate, um, as we, uh, closed this week. So, uh, as we continue to work towards fund balance, uh, projection, 7 million may be about where we end up th- this year. Uh, but we would still look to see if we could, uh, move that up a touch if at all possible. Um, the, the other component, uh, that we've had a lot of discussion about this week is, uh, how to manage, uh, best manage the additional monies, uh, that are coming in from our borrowings. When you borrow notes or bonds, you do get what's referred to as a premium. Um, it's used to, uh, quite often offset an, an interest payment in the first year. Um, and also we have, uh, monies left over from the, uh, the most recent 2012 capital project. Uh, the unexpended capital project money is around $990,000. Um, premiums received from, uh, previous bond anticipation notes, uh, is, is a little bit more than $700,000. And then, uh, our most recent, uh, debt service issue, the bonds that, uh, we're gonna receive the money for tomorrow, uh, we, we did receive a very large, um, premium. And we will be able to put, uh, around $800,000 into that, uh, capital debt service reserve as well. So the combination of, of this is we'll be able to put about $2 million into this, uh, fund. The fund, the sources of the fund specifically have to be, uh, either unexpended monies from capital projects or proceeds from bonds, including premiums. So, uh, there's a limited resource and also, uh, how you spend that money is also dedicated specifically to debt service. So it's an in and out. We had a lot of conversation. There is an issue to put it in the general fund. But, um, after talking to, uh, our, our attorneys, our financial advisors and our independent auditors, um, we felt as though, uh, putting it in the debt service fund, uh, was the most prudent way to manage it. It's transparent and, uh, we feel really good about, uh, this particular decision. You'll also see an agenda item to, uh, recognize the debt service fund. And then while, as we said, we've got a total of about $2 million, uh, keeping that bucket a little bit higher. Uh, 2.5 million dollars is the, the amount that you've got on, on there in, in the up to. So these balances will be transferred to the debt service fund before the end of the year. Uh, the resolution is on your agenda and as I said, they must be used to offset debt service expenditures in future budgets. So what you'll see in future budget projections, um, is transfers from the debt service fund to the general fund, um, based on how, uh, these monies would be best distributed to, uh, to offset any gaps throughout future years.
Mark, so just to, uh, reiterate some of the points relative to the couple, the first two bullets up there, um, there's, there's a little bit of cleaning up of sorts, probably over the last several years from the borrowings we've had from the 2012 capital project, as well as establishing a fund and a process moving forward that will serve us well. So previously, um, as you know, we had around a $23.6 million project in 2012 approved and that came to conclusion in December. And when that came to conclusion in December, uh, Mrs. Conley notified me that there was roughly, um, a million dollars of unexpended funds. Uh, 500,000 that could be utilized for additional projects, um, within the scope of what was approved and another 400,000 that could only be used for HVAC work at Windermere because it was part of that small $4 million project that you all, um, put forth and was, had approved. So at that point, we had some discussion about, um, borrowing less that amount to offset our debt service payments down the road. In addition, the $23.6 million had been through a series of four bands for bond anticipation notes, which is short-term borrowing for one year. And every time we closed on those bands, we generated a premium, as Mr. Wile mentioned, and the premium was in our capital fund. And that was about $700,000. So now our goal is to transfer that money to a debt service fund and then take the premium generated tomorrow when we close on the bond of about $800,000 and have that in the debt service fund so that we can offset our debts, debt service payments, um, down the road with appropriating some of that money from that fund. Um, the additional piece that I wanted to mention is $800,000 or roughly $800,000 of that money will be used or has to be used because it's a premium generated from borrowing that we'll get tomorrow. Um, $800,000 of that has to be used for next year's interest payment on the, uh, bond that closed, uh, that will close this week. So that will leave roughly 1.2 million dollars in that fund for the board to consider as a source of revenue in budgeting as we move forward to offset our debt service obligation.
The, uh, all right, so the capital reserve, are we tying our hands at all? The debt service reserve? No, the capital reserve. Oh, the capital reserve? Um, well, that, that's a decision that could be made. That's a, that's a fair question. Um, the, the capital reserve, uh, is up to $500,000. The retirement contribution reserve is up to 1.2. So given the fact that we're looking at 700 to 900,000 dollars, should, should there be a choice not to fund into the capital reserve this summer? Um, I would be confident that you wouldn't need to. Um, so you can have further discussion on, uh, how much, if any, to put into that reserve and then at what time you want to, um, use it. Because if you put it in now, it is specifically for capital projects. That's the point, right? Um, but I, I think as, that's why we wanted to be generous with these two amounts uh, because I, I believe that, um, if you choose not to, uh, use the capital reserve, you could use the retirement contribution reserve completely. And with a seven-day, $800,000 annual contribution to, to that retirement system, uh, there's a lot of flexibility, as Mr. Pennella said. That's about two years' worth. So that's, that's really not a bad place to put it as well. Um, tho- those will not be determined until August, but I think, uh, with, with your comment, I think we'd be cognizant of, uh, of taking that into consideration when the final distribution takes place. Thank you very much.
So, the la- there's one last item in the superintendent's report and that will be led by, uh, President Steinle, his, uh, review of our board of education goals from this faculty.
I just wanted to go over our, you know, we created what ended up being three goals back in, uh, November for the board to try and work towards this year. One of them, the, the first one was the super, uh, eval system, superintendent evaluation system, which we did. We implemented it, we got trained on it, we completed Mr. Pennella's review this year. I'd say we, you know, we accomplished that goal. The, the second goal was on advocacy and, and the way the goal read was, um, two to three of us board members would be attending this, at the Erie County School Boards Association advocacy meeting back in January. And unfortunately, that meeting got canceled due to weather and then wasn't rescheduled. And so we just, I think if, you know, looking at our website and stuff, we just put information that we, you know, we've had in previous years about writing letters and what have you on that. So, a little bit out of our control, I guess, um, the goal was specific to attending that meeting. And then goal three was board professional development, having all of us attend, uh, various functions, which maybe, you know, hasn't happened as much in the past. But I think in, in going through in my head and in my meeting, past meeting notes, we all seem to have attended quite a few. I, I counted numerous things for each board member, um, that we have attended and shared with the board, um, at various meetings. So, we seem to have done better, I think, than we have in the past on that, so. As far as new goals, that'll be up to when our two new board members take their seats at the table in July, you know, and we'll set new goals. But, uh, these three goals, I just wanted to review and unfortunately, the advocacy was one we didn't get to a little bit because of mother nature. I don't know if anyone has any comments or questions or... But I, I just wanted to close the school year out with just reviewing our, those three goals that we had set back in November.
That draws the conclusion to the superintendent's report. Thank you.
Okay. We will need a motion for new business and I will ask, you know, our, one of our departing board members to, uh, you know, step up and make their last motion.
I have such poor practice, I was too early. I've invented it once in nine years.
I will make a motion for new business items, F1A through J, 2A through O, and 3A, B, C, D, E, and H.
Do I have a second?
I have a second. Forget that.
All right, all those in favor of new, oh, excuse me, any discussion on any of the items? All those in favor of new business items, F1A through J, 2A through O, and 3A through E and H, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries 6-0. Do we have any follow-up actions to do next? I don't believe.
None that I heard.
None that I heard either. We do not have any executive session for tonight, so we will need a motion to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for coming.